We ready to go?
Yep, I think so.
Yeah.
Richard?
I'm ready.
Okay. Before, before we got on, Richard asked me to just sort of take us through the beginning of this. We can reorganize the board. So with that, meetings called the order at 6:31. The attendance, we'll call vote of attendance. Larry Boudreaux.
Here.
Lindsey Butler.
Yeah.
Stephen Coswell.
Yeah.
Walt Meisner here, Richard Wright.
Yeah.
Here, we don't have, we'll deal with the issue of associate member later. We have notifications. The note, following notifications are to be spoken. Order and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, except for public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Documents submitted for review can be found under the planning board tab on the town website. Meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. As this is a remote meeting, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. As this is a remote meeting, those appearing before the board shall be prepared to share their screen to present materials for discussion. The agenda approval. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve.
And a second?
Yep.
And second, Richard, and motion by Larry, second by Richard, roll call vote, Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Lindsey Butler.
Yes.
Even Coswell.
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes, Richard Wright, yeah. Okay, with that said, we don't have a chairman yet, so there's no chairman comments in that. So let's move on to welcoming Steve. Member of the board, congratulations, we're.
Welcome Steve. Thank you. It's good to be here.
Yep, we're glad, and we have to now deal with the issue of chairmanship for this going forward. Richard, you're the vice chair. And would you want to be chairman?
I would not. I would, I would stay as vice chair because of the fact that where I am in business and whatnot, I would think that's the best part for me to help out with the vice chair.
I will say that I, one thing I wanted to say is that I feel I, that it is awkward with Rosemary being a select, my wife being a select board member. That would be one reason why I have qualms about considering it. And I'm also feeling that with only two years under my belt on this board, there's a lot more for me to learn. So I would prefer not to do it. However, I want to defer to Lindsey and Larry to see what they of their interest in this.
Well, I, I don't have an interest at the time, Walt, because I'm even more newer than you are. Wouldn't, and as far as, you know, Rosemary being on the Board of Selectmen, I don't think that has, wouldn't even consider that. As far as you taking that position.
I agree with that, Lindsey, because number one, I'm not interested. I, I just started a new job and I'm, I'm.
Okay.
The obligation just isn't, I don't, I have the heart for the obligation for it.
So Walt, it looks like we're going to nominate you, or I will nominate you to start.
I'll second.
I'll third it.
I appreciate it. I, I will say I'm a little bit hesitant about the time commitment and stuff, but under the circumstances and given what it is, we'll I'll take charge for this meeting and for the next few, and we'll see, we'll see where it takes us all, but, but I understand. So we need to, we've had a, a motion and a second. Can we have a vote now, starting with Larry Boudreaux?
Uh, yes, I vote for you, Walt.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Uh, Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Uh, I will abstain, and Richard Wright? I assume that's a nod. We didn't hear you, Richard.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, okay. So with that, now we have to select the vice chairman. Do we have any nominations?
I think Richard's doing a great job.
I would second that.
So moved.
So moved. Uh, we have a motion in a second for Richard being the vice chair. Any comments? Hearing none. Vote Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Even Coswell?
Yes.
Uh, Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright?
Yep.
He agrees to do it.
I'll, I'll do the best I can, okay?
We have the clerk role. And I would like to continue with Lindsey if she would be so willing to do that. I would like to nominate her if she would accept.
I'll second that.
I'll, I'll accept it till our new member gets on board and then we can pass the buck to him.
I understood. Any, any other nominations? Hearing none. We have a motion in a second. Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler? Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright?
Yeah.
Yes. I, I take either Lindsey said yes, or she abstained, or she's resistant.
She's so excited.
Yeah, all of the above. Um, we have had one, uh, letter. I checked with Heather earlier today. We had one letter of interests from, um, from Roger Hoyt to be the associate member of the board. This is a three-year term. We have to, it's an appointment made by the Board of Selectmen, so we need to recommend Roger to the board. So I would like to move that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Roger Hoyt be the associate member of the planning board.
I get that.
Uh, we have a second from Richard Wright. Any other comments, input? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes, and Richard Wright? Yes, I take that as a yes.
Yeah. Richard, further away, you're going to talk louder.
No, a little bit further away, I'm sorry.
North Carolina is pretty far away. So we have completed that agenda item. Uh, so chairman has no comments. Vice chairman, do you have any comments?
Not whatsoever.
Okay, we can move on to item number four, which is the open discussion, public comment. I noticed today that, and I assume that this, by the way, I did not, obviously, I, the agenda was really set for us. I think we can talk under new business about the new agenda format that Lindsey put forth for going forward so that, and, and we can set that up for the next, for the next meeting. So we are essentially following the agenda that was set by Roger and Heather, but there was an addition in the last couple of days of the scenic road application and hearing Packard Road, which is open discussion and for public comment. So before we get on to that, I, I want to know, is anyone here representing the scenic road application for Packard Hill?
Cameron Dunbar for Hartsorne Family LLC.
Okay. Cameron, thank you very much. Let's, let's do that before we open it up for just sort of general public comment, moving on to the A and Rs. Would you like to share your screen and basically show us what we're doing? What's your application?
I'm not the representative of the family. It's just in a butter and we're registered our, our support forum. That's all my role.
Okay, okay. Is anyone here other representing the scenic road application? Hearing none, no one's here, uh, representing this. It's a public hearing. Uh, we have, I know butter that's supporting it. I was very curious on this one. This is the same application, or did we not rule in, I noticed in Lindsey's minutes for the April 14th meeting that we discussed this and felt that there was no need for a scenic road application. So I was quite surprised to see this end up on the agenda. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on that?
Bring me up to speed. Isn't Packard Road all already designated as a scenic road?
It is a scenic road, uh, this application, uh, and I can bring it up on the screen.
Any questions for Glenn?
Do you have any questions?
I, I thought it was already there, so I'm, I just don't know. Is this something we, someone, people have to refile, or is this, is there a problem with something getting done on the road that we should be told of?
No, the, uh, this application was considered, it's, let me see if I can get you to a, there is, there were no, uh, it's an old carriage road. Uh, there's no breakage in the, in the, uh, stone wall. There's no trees being cut down. So we questioned on the 14th whether we even needed a scenic road, a scenic road application. It is.
I, I thought that was kind of odd that we had it as well.
Yeah, I, I was kind of surprised, but because I just learned of it today, I had no opportunity to sort of ask why it was added to the agenda.
How about, I think it was part of the, uh, the original scenic roads designations. Uh, maybe we could check with, uh, the family to see if there's, uh, something going on that we, we, we don't know of, and, um, they want to remind us that, you know, so maybe a letter to the family, you know, wonder, yeah, to check on, on, um, what's happening out there.
I, I think that, well, this is a public hearing, so it's really an opportunity for anybody to voice. There's Roger, just join. Uh, Roger?
I can tell you what I know, and I think it's just, uh, evidently the, when the application came in, um, I know we had talked about, we would evaluate it. And if it wasn't necessary, nothing was involved, we wouldn't need a public hearing, but evidently it, um, was advertised and posted as, as the hearing.
Okay.
So I, my advice would be just to go ahead, have the hearing, make your decision as normal. And, and, and that'll be it. If there's anything that we're not prepared for tonight, doesn't appear to be the case from, from what I see that we've got, uh, you know, nobody objecting to it or questioning it, that you can continue have the hearing, make the decision, and like we normally have done.
Well.
Um, it's just because it got advertised.
Motion that we do just that, that we continue the scenic road designation for Packard Hill Road as, as, uh, originally designated.
You, I, I just want to interrupt for one second. There is an issue. And the issue is that the latest word that I have is that they want to put in a gravel bank there. Uh, and that comes from somebody on the Economic Development Commission. So I'd like to know if there's anybody here representing the Shubins and whether that's true or not.
So what's the process to do something like that on a scenic road?
Good question. Not, it's not only a scenic road, but it was just tired. And I know the last time we tired the road.
Have a policy and personnel update. Is there any question?
Who's spoken, who's speaking, please?
No, it was, uh, someone else. I had muted them. Um, so I'm sorry, sir, what? So you're saying you heard that there's a gravel pit?
Well, we, we're direct the butters to the Shubert's property, and, uh, I was told through the grapevine that there's, there, uh, there's a word out there that they're going to turn it into a gravel bank. And I'd like to know if this is still just the original plan that we've seen of the driveway to the property in the back for one house, or is it now going to be change of use? And if so, what board does has to go on, that we have to go in front of, and will there be a public hearing on that? If that's, if it's going to be a change of use, obviously, but.
Sorry, if, if that is the case, then you will be notified as in a butter. Um, I'm not really certain if it would be this board, but if that's something that they're doing and they're disturbing more than an acre of land, they're going to need a permit for it. But right now it's just for the special permit. I'm sorry, for the scenic road.
Yeah, and I don't see, as Roger said, and you guys have said this, it's a road already that's existing. There's no trees over four inches. There's no stone walls being disturbed, so it's kind of a moot point. But I just didn't want to bring that up, so the board will be aware that that's what I have heard, and it came through some, from one of the town boards. I don't know who brought the subject up or where it came from, but be aware that, uh.
Well, well, thank you. This is a public hearing and, and that will, that comment will be added to the, the minutes for the public hearing.
Thank you.
There was one, one person who, um, voiced support for, for it, uh, and, and you're raising this question, and we should get an answer to that question before we actually vote on the, the public, uh, vote on the permit. So, um.
No, I'm sorry, Walt. I don't, well, I agree with you there. I think right now we just need to vote on whether or not it for, um.
A scenic road.
It remains a scenic road.
Correct, and that's it.
Right.
Well, it definitely remains a scenic road. They're asking for a permit, which is not cutting down any trees and not breaking any, any walls.
To get into the property.
So from that standpoint, it isn't, but it, it should be noted, and we should follow up with, with, uh, the, um, Land Use Office and make them, or make them, make it clear to them that this question was raised.
Well, the other issue, the other issue that would come up in that case is the fact that Packard Hill was just retired a year or so ago, and, uh, it's going to run trucks over it. Uh, I believe we had a five-year moratorium on, uh, High Street, uh, to any road cuts or any heavy equipment. So I think that would be playing to that also.
Yes.
When it comes down to it, um, I'd like to know what board they have to appear in front of, and, uh, uh, you know, make sure that we do get notified. So that's my only concerns.
Okay. Very good questions. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other public, uh, person from the public that has anything to say about this? Hearing none, then I think we can entertain a motion to, um, to clo, first off, we have to close the public hearing. We never officially opened it because I'm new and I made the mistake to not officially open it, but we'll officially close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close it?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Second, uh, Larry Boudreaux?
All in favor?
Yeah, no, I got to say, I got a roll call vote. Okay, because, because it's a Zoom call. Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Steve Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, so we've closed the public hearing, and now may I have a motion to, uh, support the public, uh, support the, uh, special permit?
So moved.
Second? A second, Larry's second edit. Lindsey, uh, moved it. Uh, let's have a vote. Uh, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright?
Yeah.
Okay, so we support that, but, uh, thank you, George. Those notes will be added to our minutes, and we'll bring it up with the Land Use Office tomorrow. We now have open discussion, public comment in general. Does anybody have any open, uh, any, uh, public comment? Did I hear something? Nope, I, I hear, hearing none. I think, uh, we can move on from public comment and open discussion. We have three A and R, uh, applications to consider. The first one is, um, to the Far Hill and, uh, Bluefield Road A and R. That one is, um, I will. For some reason, I'm having trouble opening this. All right. I'll take the screen. Uh, you have to give me the ability to share my screen, Lindsey.
Can you try it now?
Yes. All right. I will, uh, if this was sent out to the board earlier, if you can, uh, if anybody has any questions, but this is the plan of land, Bluefield Road, prepared for William and Gail Dorian, uh, GPR Engineering. Is GPR Engineering here representing the applicant?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, Walt?
Yes. Uh, we can. Uh, would you, uh, want me to stop sharing and you share your screen?
No, I prefer that you would. This is, uh, I just received notification less than a half hour ago, so I'm double remote here.
Okay. Um, if I can remind the committee real briefly, we considered this A and R, uh, I think on the 14th. Or it was, uh, it, it was in our March meeting or our April meeting, uh, and, um, we had one question about non-conforming lot that the property that was being, um, the part, the portion of the lot that was being taken from, we had a question about whether it would, how many square feet it was and whether it was conforming. So could you, um?
Yeah, could I jump in there now?
In there and give us your take on that.
Will do, Walt. Um, yeah, the meeting was back in March. It's been kind of a difficult reconnect with you folks, but in any case, we've taken that plan, requested that continuation to provide more support on this. We've taken the original plan and added in the bottom right-hand corner, uh, a larger locus map in hopes to explain things. The property owner is actually Far Hills Association, shown on assessors map 46 as parcel 62. It encompasses all of that lake water body, and then some, any of the land that had not been conveyed to adjacent landowners is still owned by Far Hills Association. Up in that corner where you have your cursor, that's parcel A. That's what we're proposing to remove from Far Hills Association, Sunset Lake group there. And that parcel is roughly 1,900 square feet. It was land that was always considered by the Doreans to be owned by them. There's no other reason to think otherwise. It's been occupied. It's a sandy portion of the lake. So Far Hills and the Doreans have agreed to a conveyance, and that's what that plan before you represents. That parcel A is proposed to be conveyed and combined with the Jason land of, uh, William and Gail Dorian. So we'd only increase their lot size.
Do you know if the lot, that this is this portion of the lot, uh, how many square feet it will remain?
We're talking hundreds of acres. I, I have only, my guesstimate, I could pull up the assessor's record card for which I've, yeah, included in that package. It's, it's made of multiple parcels, and I'm not sure what it's being assessed for.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that was my only concern. I just wanted to see what, uh, from the last meeting, what that other, the numbers for that parcel were, as it's a requirement for the plan.
Yeah.
You know, and I, we had the same answer, is it's multiple acres. But I'm not opposed to this. I just think it should, you, you know, it's part of the process, and it should be stated on the plan how much, what they're taking away from one lot and giving to the other.
Yeah, Lindsey, the assessor's record card listed as 279 acres for which we're, we're proposing to remove a little greater than 1,900 square feet.
So that one parcel right there, you're telling, is 200?
No, that's, that, that little strip boat that you are running the cursor back and forth on is just an area of upland.
Yes, I know. So that's what I wanted to, where's the other parcel? So that's it? Or is, is there a continuing parcel? Are you?
If, uh, you drop lower perhaps into that locus map, that yes.
Let's see if I.
See all of that area that we show as Sunset Lake.
Yeah.
And if you follow the, the parcel A arrowhead down to that corner, that's the segment that's proposed to be removed, but all of that 279 acres is the locus parcel for which we're extracting.
Is it continuous?
Yes, contiguous. It's one contiguous parcel.
But it's not continuous where.
Uh, I, I gotta chime in here.
Okay.
I know that piece of property really well. And, um, can you scroll down and get the, the, it's there, it's a Bluefield Road goes out to a point. If you look at the little locus parcel there, Bluefield Road, you see Spruce Road.
Yeah.
And you see Bluefield Road, and that dead ends on a point.
Yeah.
Um, it's surrounded by Sunset Lake water. There's from Dorian's house, there's one, two, three, four houses on that point. There's not 219 acres out there. There's just a, you can see the little, the little Bluefield Road where it dead ends.
Yeah.
They're talking about from the, the curve in Bluefield Road out to the, out to the end of the point, there's a very narrow strip of, of, of land.
So this is this, this road here, Bluefield Road.
No, 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 this, the, the strip of land that abuts Sunset Lake.
Okay, this right here.
Then, if you, as you view parcel A, to your left, the parcel land you're talking about is just a very narrow strip of land that abuts, follows, uh, the, the Bluefield Road out to the dead end. At the end, if you look at the locus map, and, um, there's hardly 219 acres out there.
Could I, could I interrupt you for one second? That area that you're looking at is just an area of upland. The, and that heavier line, that's the right of way of Bluefield Road. So I agree with you. There are three or four homeowners at the end of Bluefield Road, but that continues off of this page. The, the Far Hills Association property that the assessors has as 279 acres is everything from that edge of Bluefield Road down towards the bottom of the page, and then so.
Sir, why don't we have a plan that shows that? I mean, you just, the, this locus, you can't really tell much from there. I'm sorry. I feel like this was what we asked last time. You know, you need to show it's part of the requirements. What, what you're taking from the other parcel, how many acres, what's the size of it, and I mean, I, you.
So another, if I can ask Lindsey, then you would say that if this plan had the remaining square footage of this parcel to the end of.
And to the point.
And to the whole, yeah, the whole parcel. That's what we should be seeing. I, I don't. We shouldn't just see a chunk of it. We should see the whole parcel that you're taking it from. I mean, you can, with using this locus.
Excuse me, but are you suggesting that we show the entire boundary of the two hundred and seventy-nine acres of Sunset Lake or Fire Hills?
No, no, no.
Whatever that parcel's connected to.
Just this to the end of the point, because at the end of the point, it's, it's not the, Uh, it's not, I mean, cause the, it's not continuous.
Walt, could I ask you to look in some of the additional information that I provided? There should be an assessors map further on down. Um, included in that submission package.
Don't have it on here, but I can stop this. Go to My. And so you say assessor's card, data card, is that what you're looking for?
No, I actually submitted the map itself. The, the data card would indicate the two hundred and seventy-nine acres owned by Fire Hills Association.
But would it be the Far Hills Record Plan? Would it be the Record?
Yeah, let's try that one perhaps. Let's see what it is. There is a, a brief picture that I had marked up there, that parcel A.
Okay, so this is, this is this here.
Yes, in those, that lines of Bluefield Road.
So essentially, all the way here.
So yeah.
All the way around here, that narrow little strip is what you're talking about.
Yeah, that narrow little strip is closer to the, right where your cursor is there, the red line.
Right, I see. So essentially, what Lindsay's asking for, I think, don't want to put words in her mouth. She's asking that the plan Show this entire parcel from here to the end of the point. Uh, because I assume these go right to the lake, these properties go right to the lake. So it would just be This part here to that. And if you had a plan that showed that whole thing and then had the square footage in it, That would, um, Have, be what, uh, beat our requirements. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying, Lindsay?
That's what I'm saying, because we need to show that we're not making, uh, the other lot non-conforming. Can't take from a lot to make it non-conforming. If that makes sense. We can't cut a chunk out of it and then now we have a non-conforming.
But if, if the, I might have a question about The, the nineteen hundred square feet that your Doreans are taking over from that other lot. Was that other lot Big enough to be a house lot in the first place or a conforming lot? Or is it just A strip of land that's abuts the water that nobody could have built on anyway?
The only thing that would make it conforming is a square footage.
Which is two hundred and seventy-nine acres.
But, but, but it's not, it's not because it's not continuous.
It, it has frontage on other segments of the lakeside as well.
Yeah, yeah, but the only thing we're interested in is the parcel, the complete parcel that you're taking from.
If, if you folks are more comfortable with approving the plan contingent upon The additional right-of-way being shown on that plan, I'd be happy to provide it.
Yeah, and provided that it's, it, it meets the square footage of a conforming lot.
I will, I would also.
Other, otherwise, otherwise, all we would, we would have to do is we would have to find some way to Make an exception to the law, and that would be another s- step in the process, I think. But yes, I, I see what you're, you know, I, I would be, I would be fine entertaining a motion to that effect. But we definitely need to have it shown for the record, what, what it is we're taking from, and if it's a conforming lot. So contingent upon it being a conforming lot after you show us that, I would be supportive of this. How does others feel?
I would, but I personally would like to see the plan, because I feel like we talked about this last meeting and he just submitted, um, What we're looking in front of us. So I, that's just my personal opinion.
Richard, what do you think?
I feel like he could give a show us more than what he's showing us.
Larry?
Um, I'm kind of on the other side, but.
That's okay.
If, if that strip of land wasn't buildable to start with, Even though it's a square foot, if, if the lot is square footage, Has enough square footage, but you can't build because it's right against the water and it's in between the road, then, I mean, I, I don't know What the bylaws say as far as Approve of that, but if that's
Steve.
Included in the two hundred and seventy-six acres. And they're just cutting off that piece, I.
Steve, you said you're familiar with that property, so that strip.
I don't, I don't understand. I'm looking at a very narrow strip of land and the gentleman's talking about two hundred and seventy continued, two hundred and seventy-nine acres of continuous land. So it must meet up with another piece of land that Fire Hills owns. So I, I'm just a little confused as to what the gentleman, you know, what, what Doreans will end up with.
Let, let me try again here. The picture that's in front of you right now that says Sunset Lake, That, that is the parcel that we're extracting it from. That Sunset Lake is two hundred and seventy-nine acres.
So you're taking the little strip of land That abuts.
Little strip of land and all the land that's under it.
And all, yeah, that's.
Yeah, in other words, all the water.
No, 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 no. We're, we're, we're just taking the upland area in that corner.
I don't think that's the way it would be, would, would it end up? Where, you know, once you sign off on it.
Part of that lake to the rest of it.
Yeah, you gotta separate that. You gotta separate that, yeah.
You, you, you're, you're opening up the rest of the lake to that one.
Yeah, you're including the two hundred and seventy-nine acres in that, in that parcel.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't understand, but if you guys, I would like to, uh, obtain a vote tonight contingent upon Something if you want to be added to that plan. Otherwise, if it's a denial, I'd like you to, uh, let me know why.
Cause we don't have enough information.
I mean, again, I'm not opposed to it. I just, the, the requirements are you need to show What parcel you're taking it from, and then the square footage, you need to show all parcels in its entirety, not just a sliver of it.
We know what you're gonna take. What, 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 what kind of impact is it gonna have on the rest of the property?
Could I ask you to scroll back to the submission plan? The A and R that was submitted? Okay, we're, we're, I have identified Fire Hills Association As the remaining land, uh, to the top left of where your cursor currently is. It, it shows it as the assessor parcel ID. Yeah, just below that, yeah, right in there. How about if I add the remaining acreage amount right there? I would identify two hundred and seventy-eight and a half plus or minus acres.
But so you're counting the lake, though. That's what you're counting as the acreage for the.
That's, they own the lake. Yeah, it's a damn lake.
I understand that, but I just, is that what the parcel is? So when you look at the parcel map, it shows the lake.
Yes.
So if we, if, so if, so another, that's how they got to the two hundred and seventy-nine acres. Yeah.
Correct.
And so essentially, they're just saying, this is, they are counting the land that's under the water. Essentially. Because they own the lake.
Correct.
The, the, the lake, the land that the par- the parcel is Covered with water, except for this little sliver here that they're taking from. That's the argument.
Okay, so makes a little more sense. It's, you know, if you showed that clear on the map, the lake with the acreage As parcel B that we're taking For A.
But can, can that partial run into a, a road? So we can block it at the road?
No, the, the parcel itself does not extend to Bluefield Road.
Okay, so it's still part of the lake.
Correct.
Yeah. If, if, look, if that's true, we, we're, I know this Probably comes across that we're being extremely nitpicky and we, we regret that, but unfortunately That's what the rules we're, we're living under, that we're taking, you know, we're taking a sliver of parcel. So all we really need in order to document our decision is being conforming to the law And the bylaws is having this plan here properly explain That, that the two hundred and some odd acres is the land, The land that the water sits on, and this is just a sliver that happens to not have water over it. And if that was, if that was explained here, we probably wouldn't have had the conversation.
Yes, I had no idea that he was counting the lake as the actual parcel.
So, and so the actual parcel from the assessors, Um, and I just, I've been trying to find what you were referring to in the other documents, but I didn't, so. That's why. So that is, this is the, the data card. And Fire Hills Association Zone Land Area, two hundred and seventy-nine acres. So this is. I know nobody can read this, because I can barely read it on my computer, but.
That would be the deed associated with that property.
So this right here Is essentially what you're talking about, that this yellow area here. Now, see, that explains it.
Yes, that, that does explain it.
That's what we were looking for. Okay.
Okay.
Can I have a motion for approval then?
I'll motion approve it.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Lindsay. Uh, any other discussion? Let's take a vote. Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Eve Coswell.
I don't understand.
Oh, you don't understand?
Yeah.
You see what this is now?
Yeah, I know, I know the property really well.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed, uh, you know, I, I get what, you know,
Yeah.
The, 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 you know, the, the intended purchaser would like to do, and I'm not opposed to the idea, I just, I don't know. I, I would, if I were Fire Hills, I'd have a representative here, but what do I know? I'll vote yes.
Uh, Walt Meisner, yes, and Richard Wright. He's, he's missing, but I'm gonna, we have at least four votes now, so I think we have, it, it carries. Uh, we support that this is an, uh, an appropriate A and R and, uh, Will, uh, do you have the MyLars that are in the office? That we have to sign?
Uh, is that directed to me, Walt, or is that?
It's directed.
I, I submitted them to the, um,
Heather.
Well, initially to Heather, second time around, went to the town clerk.
Okay, okay, all right. So we'll, we'll take care and we'll make sure we sign off on those.
Okay, should I make, uh, request to the town clerk or would Heather notify me from here forward?
Uh, no, we can have it taken care of within the week, and you can just pick it up from her.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sorry for all the confusion and stuff, but, uh, Uh, I think you understand what we were looking for to begin with, so we're.
Yeah, I know, right from the get-go, I would have addressed it, but I'm glad we clarified it.
Gone to that map, because that explains if this is the parcel, then it isn't really an issue. We're just taking it from that, Which is more than enough, and there's proof of it there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Take care.
And, uh, The next, uh, next one we have is Willard Road. Is there representatives from Willard Road here?
I'm sending you.
Pardon?
Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering.
Hi, hi, Brian. Let me pull up Willard Road. Your materials. I've got to Rotate this, okay? Having trouble rotating it, I'm sorry. Okay, let me try again, and I'll try sharing my screen. Do you have your, can you share your screen?
Yes, I can. I have it up here.
Why don't you take care, uh, she, share your screen and walk us through it?
Okay. So if you can see the screen here, uh, this is the parcel on Willard Road. Um, it's approximately thirty-two acres in size. Um, starts here, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yeah.
But we've subdivided the thirty-two acres into seven lots. Um, all the lots have adequate frontage. They exceed the required hundred and fifty, when your feet are frontage. Uh, they exceed the minimum lot acreage of forty-five thousand square feet. Um, We've gone out and done septic testing on all seven lots. Uh, all the deep holes and perks have passed. And, um, We're basically looking to divide it, so all seven lots have frontage on Willard Road. Um, the, uh, Like I said, we went out with Board of Health last couple of weeks or a few weeks ago. Um, surveyors went out, staked out all post-septic systems, so we're kind of in the End stages here of design on the individual lots, so we're looking to get this approved first, and then we'll follow through with Our developer, the remaining land here. Uh, we did have the entire thirty-two acres, uh, flagged Uh, for the wetlands, uh, and this is a, obviously Topolands survey performed the Topographic and Boundary Survey for us.
Does anybody have any questions, Brian? I'm hearing none. I have just one sort of unrelated question, just out of curiosity. Were you at one time, were they, was the Owners at one time considering making this a subdivision?
We did. We were thinking about the subdivision, um, but after seeing how the entire parcel was Kind of divided by a couple of wetland systems, it made it, it made it hard to, to fit lots with, To make it economical with the length of roadway that would be required and the amount of lots we would actually get out of it. Um, so this was actually a, a, uh, more economical and less impactful.
So it was really, it was really the, some of the wetlands circumstances that caused that? I was kind of hoping you were gonna make it a subdivision when I heard that you, they purchased the property.
Yeah, the, the well-in was the deciding factor. The cost of the roadway, it was, you know, in excess of a thousand feet to get to the back, around the backside of it. And then with the subdivision road in the middle, having ample area to fit the houses and, and, uh, You know, you could have a lot of area for them, but it just, it barely got us the same amount of lots.
Hmm.
So it just wasn't economical to develop.
Wow, okay, uh.
But I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Do you know acreage, um, minus the wetland areas?
Uh, I, I don't have it on hand here, but if you look at the areas with the most wetlands in here, like Lot Six is ten point three nine acres, so It, it far exceeds, um, the minimum lot area of forty-five thousand square feet. You know, many times over per lot of upland area.
Yeah, I see that one. I'm looking more like at two, three, or there's a pretty.
Yeah, and I'll, let me show you, um, if you look at, You know, Lot Two, it's a, it's a small finger. I mean, every one of these has well over an acre of upland area. Well over an acre. And if you look at like, I mean, two in particular is probably the one you, you'd be, um, a lot three. You know, it's three point two seven acres, so even if it's half of that, you still have almost, you know, an acre and, and three quarters Of upland area, which far exceeds the minimum lot area. If we look at, um, You know, you can see the backside of the lot, these lots, how much upland area we have on the end of them. That's, you know, all upland with, like I said, it was the minimum wetland pockets back here. When you factor in the, the node build zone around the wetlands and the buffer zones minimizing the impact, it just really didn't make that much sense. So this.
Those are some. Those are some beautiful property up there.
Yep, it's, you know, it's gonna have seven, seven landowners with a lot of nice land in the back that's undeveloped.
Yeah, yeah, interesting, yeah. Any other questions? I I can checks, you're checking all the boxes, you have the an adequate square footage, you have the adequate frontage. And it, it, this vote as an A and R is essentially for us to agree that this is not a subdivision. So do I have, do I have a vote to approve? Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Lindsay moves. Do I have a second? Second. Larry, uh, let's take a, um, any other questions? Let's take a vote. Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright. If you haven't been able to tell, I've been going in alphabetical order, Richard. That's why you're always last.
Hey, that's the way it works. I'm used to that.
You have, you've given the Mylars to um.
Yes, they're a town.
So we'll uh, we'll all make an appointment to get down there within the next week and get it to you. Do you have any time limit?
Uh, no, developers just looking forward as soon as possible.
Okay.
He's got most of these lots buyers ready for him.
I would say that within the week, we'll all have our signatures on the, on Mylar.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now. Go back to my other screen. And we have one other A and R, and that other A and R is Jewel Hill Road. Do I have a representative for Jewel Hill Road here?
Sure, Chris Mossman from Troubridge Engineering.
Hi, Chris, how are you? Good to see you again. Good, you wanted, you want to take control of the screen and tell us why?
I do not actually have the PDF on this computer, so uh, if Lindsay could bring it up, that would be great.
Well, I just pulled it up now and uh. I want to get to the map. All right. I will share my screen. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, you want to explain it to us, please?
Sure, all right. Obviously, you can see Jewel Hill Road uh, kind of running at the top of the plan. And uh, the north arrow is over on the right, so this plan is kind of turned ninety degrees um, clockwise. Um, and so we're creating out of a fifty acre lot, we're creating four lots, an A, B, C, and D. Um, there's an existing house on the fifty acres presently, and we're putting a four acre lot around that. And then we're creating three pretty much conventional lots, um, you know, we're an RB, so we need sixty thousand square feet. They actually have a full acre and a half. Sixty-five a, sixty-five thousand square feet. Um, they all, uh, since again, we're an RB, they all have pretty much exactly two hundred feet or just a little bit more. Um, so I think they all conform with uh, with the zoning requirements, dimensional requirements for, for RB. Um, and so there'll be one remaining lot um, that contains, I think, uh, it's noted down there to be about forty-two acres, I think. Um, and uh, the only other oddity here is that down at the corner where Jewel Hill, so this would be over on the left-hand side of the plan near where the driveway for the existing house intersects. Um, we're proposing a twenty-five foot right away so that some of that lower parcel uh, would be accessible um, by the owner.
Which lower parcel are you talking about?
Here where it says, uh, Thomas G LeBlanc down in the left, it's kind of tip, yes. So LeBlanc owns all the land here, but there are some wetlands back there. Um, you know, at the, at the bottom of the plan that would, uh, yes, that would preclude him from getting to the uplands that are below Lot A.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board members? Lindsay's shaking no. Larry?
No.
Steve, do you have any questions?
No, looks pretty straightforward.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. It's clearly not a subdivision. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this as an A and R?
I make a motion.
Richard has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Larry, seconds, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright. Will, um, you have the Mylars with um, with Heather?
Uh, I will get them to her. I called her today to find out when she needed them, and I didn't hear back from her, so I will run them up there tomorrow so that she'll have them.
That's super. We'll, we'll get them, just as the other ones ahead of you will get them signed within the week.
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks, folks.
Yep, bye. All right. Cruising along here. Uh, so, uh, so we took care of the A and, uh, A and Rs. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business. And I know one new business we have is um, the new um suggestion for how we deal with the agendas going forward. Um, does everybody, I can guess I can pull up Lindsay's uh, suggested new agenda, and we can talk to that. Uh, let me just pull it up here. There you go. Okay. This is Lindsay's, okay, and I'll share it. Can everybody see that? Do you need me to uh, increase? Uh, let's zoom in a little bit. Let's go to, to. Okay, um, Lindsay's proposing that our agenda is going forward be formatted uh, more like what's on the screen here, which basically notifications. Uh, comments here, and then immediately getting into the hearings. Uh, administrative matters lumped together here, and then public comment. And then, of course, next meetings and all of that. I, my only suggestion to this, I had one question for you, Lindsay. I noticed that two of the normal things that we say notify, you didn't include, and I didn't know whether that was intentional or a mistake.
I don't, I don't think so. It must have been a mistake.
Yeah, so the same notices that I read earlier today would be the same ones. You would say are in the notices, okay? The next suggestion I had, I had two other suggestions. One was to make agenda item number one. Um, call to order. Voted attendance. Notification, and then I agree with you, we don't need to approve the agenda. But in other words, just make agenda number one, we have to call the meeting to order, we have to take attendance. And then we can read the notifications, and then we go on to the next one. Um. And then we would do, you know. You know, chairman and vice chairman comments before we go straight into the hearings. And the other suggestion I had was to move public comment up underneath hearings and applications. Only because most of the people who might have public comment. You know, might have comment on applications that were here. And I don't think we want them to stay around through our administrative matters. So that was my only suggestion, was to move that up to there. Does anybody else have any suggestions or comments or thoughts? I think this is much better. Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I mean, I don't care where the public comment is, but when we have the hearings and applications. Well, it's opened up to them anyways.
Yeah, on hearings, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but no, I agree, yeah, it should be before that, you know, we do any of the administrative.
So those were my only proposed changes. And I'll do the next agenda following this format. Does anybody have any other thoughts, or do you agree? Larry?
I agree.
Okay, Steve, it makes sense to you?
Yes.
Okay, Richard, makes sense to you? Okay. Okay, so that's that. Um. Next agenda item is old business. We have no subdivision updates. I've heard nothing about Bray Ave. Um, so there's nothing there. Uh, the next agenda item was bylaw amendments, and the, we had worked on the surface water protection changes, DE, DEP. And I think we've already submitted that, and that's out of our hands and beyond, so there's no updates that I have for that. Um, so the next agenda item was correspondences. I have um, nothing from um. I have two pieces of correspondence. And they weren't, nothing from town hearings and decision notices. Or budding town hearings and just, uh, decision notices, I've heard nothing. Of course, some of these stuff won't even be on the next agenda. Other town committee updates. Um, I have nothing to report on the MRT. There has been no meeting since the last meeting we had. Um, I can report that the bylaw committee continues to meet um. Every Thursday, uh, once a week. We did not meet last week. We meet tomorrow night. And we're just essentially taking five um, five different bylaw sections and reviewing that and collecting comments for when general code, which is, as I reported at the last meeting, comes on. General code is who we um. We are, uh, the town is engaging to recodify our bylaws and put them online and get them organized in a better way. But uh, that committee is moving along slowly, um, but consistently. Um, Richard, any update on economic development? Nope, he says no. Can't hear you, Richard.
No.
Nope. Uh, any update on complete streets, Larry?
Nope. Haven't had any correspondence with anybody. I haven't had any emails saying we're getting together.
And Steve, we're gonna have to talk to you about committee assignments eventually.
Oh, great. Thought I would come out of that.
And here's Roger. Roger's on now. Everybody's left, but Roger's popping back on.
Roger, come on, Roger.
I'm back. Okay, you finished the other A and Rs today?
Yeah, we, we finished them all.
Okay, just to bring you up to date there, Steve, I'm in a butter to a member of Far Hills and in a butter to, to Mr. Doran, so. Um, as a member, I couldn't participate in uh. Wanted to keep it.
Well, you could have, you could have participated, but besides, you're not really on the board now, you're uh.
Correct.
We have, um, uh, you could have participated uh, on that one, but
Yeah.
as, as we finally figured out what they were trying to ask for, made a lot more sense to us, and and we were able to
Yeah.
authorize it. Um, the other thing we did to let you know, Roger, is earlier in the meeting, we did vote to recommend you to the Board of Selectmen to be our associate member. We have gotten no other uh, interested uh, parties for that, you know. You know, prime position that I think everyone in town is, would seek and after if they knew anything about it, right? Um, so, um, so that's where we are on that. Um, and just since you're here, do you have anything on MRPC to report, Roger?
Yes, um. And Steve, I understand that you got sworn in yesterday?
Yeah, just this morning.
This morning, okay, which meant that I was technically still a member of the board until you did that. So I was able to participate in the MRPC meeting last week. Um. The only thing with that is, um, we did get approved for the zoning map update through DLTA. Um. And they're in the process now of having a nominating committee to select the officers for MRPC for the next year. And I served as the uh, Assistant Treasurer until this morning. Um. If I am back on, I can be, would need to be reappointed as the MRPC rep um, through June. And that could participate then unless someone else want that other plum position.
Plum position through June?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I would, you know, could continue on again for the following year if so appointed, but um, I would be.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to um, make Roger the uh, appointed representative of the planning board for MRPC through June. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Is any discussion there? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Larry Boudreaux. Yep, I, I saw your lips move, Larry, but I didn't hear you. Uh, Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Emily just came home, I'm muted, you guys.
Then, um, there was a MJTC meeting this afternoon. Montagueser Joint Transportation Council, and and Brian was there also and Randy.
Do we have a member on that? Do we have to have somebody?
Uh, we have a representative, uh, the planning board does. It does not have to be a member of the planning board.
Okay.
So, um, I'm can, can continue on that regardless through June.
Okay, well, let's continue until June because it's taken, it's gonna take us a few meetings to get our act together anyway.
And there was nothing other than approving the tip, and I think that Route One-O-One project is still on there for twenty-twenty-five. Nothing changed from the last month. Um, and currently my.
It's, tell me the name of that committee again.
Montagueser Joint Transportation Council.
MJT.
MJTC, yeah, Planning Board has a representative.
Okay.
It can be anybody.
I'd, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, Wolf, maybe you can combine, well, this other one can't do anything yet, is uh. I was the um, the rep for the Capital Planning Committee. So that position is now vacant.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Not that they're doing anything until you know, another town meeting or something, but um.
Yeah, that, that we have, we have a little time on that one.
Yeah.
So I think we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that. We can, I think, push that off. As we look at committee assignments for the coming year, but for now, let's just make sure we're, we're covering ourselves on all the things that we are supposed to. So I'd like to move that uh, that Roger might be the uh, MJT representative of the planning board through June. Um, do I have a second? Lindsay seconded. Um, any more discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've taken care of our business officially. Uh. On that one. Um, now there were two, um, any other committee updates that I have missed? Being new here, um, okay. Um, we had two, uh, I had two pieces of correspondence. One is to let everyone know that um. The um. From the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, a notice came to the planning board. I believe you all received a copy of it through, or that Roger passed it on to us. But uh, just for the record, it was the, the draft priority habitat map is available for public comment beginning on May third, and it can be found at the mask gov slash N H E S P slash map, map comment. I, I would refer you to the correspondence that Roger um, graciously shared with us. Um. Uh, on the planning board uh, email site. Um, so if you want to look at that and give comment, you can do that, and we have a ZBA, by the way, the ZBA is meeting tonight. Um, but their primary issue, the Z, at the same time, our meeting is, the ZBA is a meeting on the um, parcel, on the request of the partial, the business zoned parcel at one oh one. Parcel, on the request of the partial, the business zoned parcel at 101 and 119. Whether that should be, um. Whether that should, uh, they should permit a residence to be put on to that lot, that, that's happening at the same time. That this meeting is going on and the other zoning board of appeals application. That, um. It's about, it's sled road. Do you know about that, Roger? Can you tell us what that is?
I think it's, um. They want to construct an accessory garage on a lot that does not yet have a residence. And the issue is, is can they do a accessory structure without a primary structure?
Okay. And that would be probably at an upcoming zoning board meeting. I don't think it's being reviewed tonight.
I think it's next week.
So they're, they will be reviewing that next week. Okay. Uh, but that completes, uh, the notices. Uh, other administrative matters. Um, I don't think we had anything on public boards or the website. Does anybody have anything to report on that? Hearing none, um, also on the agenda was house numbers. I guess I would refer everybody to the notice that Heather sent around about the house numbers. You know, the rules and regs for house numbers in the town. Um, Roger, do you have anything to report on that?
I think we, I sent you last week that, you know, final email resolution of, uh. 301. Range turnpike and, um. A bit of roundabout, all the way around and everything confirmation, but as the applicant had originally suggested 301 and then 301A for the accessory. Apartment is fine with the, uh, police department and the fire department.
Yeah. Yeah, I reported, I reported both of those in.
Okay.
Agenda in, in the minutes from our 21st. Meeting on 21st that we'll be approving the minutes next. So I think, I think we're good with the house numbers thing.
Yeah, and that, and potentially that could be the procedure going forward for accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
Again, it's not in much benefit to be changing an already assigned number.
Okay.
That was a difficult one because it was no.
All right.
Next number to use. But that's. Again, you know, when you get your bylaw review committee, if that's one, if you really run out of major things to do.
Yeah. No, I, I made a note of that one when we get to that later in the bylaw review, whether we wanted to clarify, uh, house numbering system by laws. Okay, uh, any other administrative matters that, uh, anyone would like to bring up? I'm here seeing everyone shake their head no. Let's move right on to approval of the. Meeting minutes. First, we have the meeting minutes of October, of, of April 14. That is. The only one that I had on that. View one page. Lindsay, I just, the only thing, excuse me. That you had the wrong day. At the top of what you sent out to us. That has to be April 14th. Otherwise I did not see anything that I would. Change. Or, or I had no edifications to add on my part. Does anyone else? Did everyone have an opportunity to read what she sent out? That's from the April 14th meeting, which by the way, is where we talked about the. Packard Hill, which is what confused me. I didn't think they needed to apply, but they ended up sending out the notices and we dealt with it today anyway.
Well, I'll move to approve those.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other edifications? Hearing none. Let's take a vote. Uh, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Steve Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the. Ones, my, the edits I sent out. I. Sent out, uh, mine and I ended up going back and rereading what I sent out to you and everything, uh, I added to it. I'll put this up here full. I'll view this as one page. I hope everybody can read that. I basically made a few small, all the only edits I made were, um. Were grammatical or in this case. I left out a word. Roger Hoyt noted that this is his last meeting. I didn't put last in there before the elections. And plural changed appoint to appointment, applications to site. Uh, reported nothing new from Ed McSweeney. I just made a lot of little three grant letter, sent, uh, our request yesterday. Removed that, removed has, is considered up. Forgive me if I'm going too fast or you all care about any of this, but. Uh, took out that's because it was just poor grammar. And be, and then I put at the end, we adjourned at. 7:17 and I did say, and I'll say it again, that the board members who are here thanked Roger Hoyt for his leadership and years of service, expressing how much he will be missed. And their hope he will consider becoming the associate member, which we hope the Board of Selectmen will approve now. So do I have a motion to approve these with the edits?
Yep.
So move the second.
Second.
Second by Larry, uh, motioned by Richard. Any other comments? Hearing none. Uh, vote to approve, uh, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
I love staying because I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right. Steve Coswell?
Yes, I guess.
Richard, oh, yo, you can't. There either, Richard, right?
I like.
Good idea. To see more of you.
I'll be back.
Yes. And, uh, Walt Meister, yes. So the, um. Uh, minutes have been approved. And now, um, our next meeting is on Wednesday, May 26. Uh, hearing if, if there's no other business to take care of, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have one, one suggestion.
Yep.
That you put in the minutes that we thank Skip Nolan for. His service. Two years, he's, he is on the planning board and.
That's right.
You know, one term as, uh, associate and guidance and assistance and sharing his knowledge.
Very good. And thank you very much, Roger. We can. This meeting.
Doing the updates that continue to meet.
Okay, we'll ask Lindsay to put that in the minutes for this meeting.
I will, yes.
Any other comments? I'm seeing Gary Howland has joined. Gary, are you here just to see, make sure we finish our meeting on time or what?
No, I'm sorry. I meant to get in on this. We actually changed our trust meetings till the third Wednesday so I could make this meeting. And don't you know, I blew it the first round? So trust is just going to try to attend the meetings just to keep an eye and, you know, share anything we might have.
And make sure we're really meeting. So that's good.
No, that's not it.
The meeting, the meetings are being recorded, so you're, uh, more than welcome to listen to the entire report. Uh, the entire recording of this riveting meeting you just missed.
Oh, absolutely. I appreciate that.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Lindsey, a second, second by, uh, Richard, uh, vote, uh, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Uh, Steve Coswell?
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Richard Wright?
Yeah, thank you so much for your thing on, uh, everybody's meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank.
I have a question.
Yep, sure.
Are you building a river for those boats back there?
Oh, geez. Yeah, building a river for boats back here. No. Yeah, I could be, uh, I could sail them down the stream, that's for sure, but.
I was just, just asking for.
Long story and, 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 and you're welcome to some time and have a drink and I'll explain what we're trying to do. Anyway, you all have a great night.
All right, everybody.
Take care of them. Yep.